Good evening, we'd like to call to order this meeting of the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, January 14th at 7:10 PM. As we begin all of our meetings, read the mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. We'll call Jeff Chalmers.
Mark Flaherty.
Kelly Peterson.
Thomas Doyle.
On to it. At the beginning of every meeting, we also open up the floor to public comment. So if anyone has any interest in commenting on anything on the agenda or anything in general, this is the, now is the time to do so. If you do, just remember that you are being taped for broadcast and everything you say can be used against you. Anyone? No? No? All right. All right, so let's see, we'll move on to exhibit one. I don't have an exhibit one. There we go, thank you. As far as donations from Looters Environmental, they gave us a $50 donation. And these, this is from Looters Environmental Corporation. In these difficult times, I am especially pleased to be able to continue our commitment to give back to communities in which we provide services. Enclosed is our contribution from the Norfolk, for the Norfolk School Department. The contribution is made by Looters Environmental, a lawn care and plant company committed to responsible environmental options made on behalf of its Norfolk clients. You're free to use these funds in any way you see appropriate. Is there a motion except these funds?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We rarely turn down free money, just for anyone viewing at home. All right, so let's, moving on to my report, we have a presentation from the Girl Scouts. Is there anyone in particular, or are you all coming up to present? Awesome. Come on up. We'll go, we'll trade seats with you so we can watch.
Is it okay if they use this microphone?
If you guys actually sit down, all of these microphones work too. If you want to sit down at a chair, or two of you share, each two share a chair. And if you speak into these, they'll hear you loud and clear. Does that sound good? Are you guys in order?
Yes, they are.
Can you share, like, share?
Wonderful, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Jane Sylvester, and I am one of the Girl Scout leaders for our fifth grade junior troop. Our other leaders are Mary Ann Mitchell and Diana Lapointe in the back. And we're working on our bronze award, and I will explain to you what that is. And I'll also answer all your questions on the Gaga pit, which I'm sure you like many. So without further ado, I'm going to have the girls introduce themselves and then start the bronze award. But before we do, just wanted to let you know that we have met with Lisa Alton Hickey, Kelly Piara, and Anne Proto, and they have given us their support. So we hope you support us as well.
And I'll also add that I've talked to Bob Bullock as well, and he has given us his blessing too, so, but I don't want to spoil the girls' presentation, so.
Say it over.
Yeah.
Want to make there?
Go ahead, girls. Do you want to introduce yourselves first? Your names?
I'm Peyton Lapointe.
Sarah Sylvester.
Julian Mitchell.
Lindsay Duson.
Kaylee Bruce.
Laura Schelmeyer.
Maddie Crowley.
Emma Williams.
Katherine Grabner.
Jacqueline Anderson.
Nice job, girls. All right, are we ready? Okay, girls.
What is a bronze award? A bronze award is a high-level goal for a junior Girl Scout which requires 20 hours of community service.
The bronze award involves completing a journey which took us four months. This taught us about leadership and team building, researching community needs, choosing, planning, and implementing a project, and 20 hours of community service.
Community needs, preventing conflicts with kids, avoiding kids from feeling left out, helping develop new friendships, providing an opportunity to include disabled children.
Our goal, build friendships, help all kids get along and play together, prevent conflicts while providing a fun physical activity for all.
How we want to do this? We want to build a Gaga pit. Gaga like means fit, fit, and is round.
What is Gaga ball? A fair enough dodgeball, you hit your hand with the ball. Here. I know, you hit the ball with your hand. Try to contact a player below their knees with the ball. A player can move to the side or jump over the ball to avoid contact. The game can be played by groups of individual players, teams, and one-on-one matches. Here's a Gaga pit. This is a video of a troop playing Gaga ball.
Is there another? Okay.
Double click. The movie's going. You start with your feet against the wall. Darren has to hit the ground twice. We're showing them the official rules. Oh, Kate. Why? So this is what we're raising money for.
The Gaga pit is designed for camps, schools, playgrounds, gymnasiums, parks, athletic clubs, and yards. Gaga used by the Norfolk Committee at recess, SAC, junior class, recreation department, summer programs, and it's open to the public.
Safety concerns, collisions with hands, bodies, or heads, scrape of hands or knuckles on the ground if you miss the ball, injury present, present. Use a lightweight ball so you don't get hurt when you hit the ball or get hit with the ball. Be sure Gaga pit is built and remain securely built and remains in good condition. Pit should last 25 years.
The location of the Gaga pit, Freeman Kennedy School, new fenced-in field at entrance on left at entrance from Boardman Street.
What is the cost? The total would be around $1,035.44. The possible lower cost, if you eliminated the floor protection, the laminated rules, and if the wood was donated, it would be around $775.50.
How we want to raise the money? We want to have a movie night that both kids in both schools can attend, a celebration for the fourth and fifth graders, an art show and a chunk show, a sports extravaganza, and a raffle.
Please approve that a Gaga pit for our community. Thank you.
Well, you got weird questions. Tell us about the Gaga pit. What do you know about it? Excellent, you're playing around with it. Tell me about it.
So it's like an octagon, and all players stand around it, and like you smack the ball and you try to hit someone below their knees to get them out, and the goal is to be the last person standing.
Who's going to build it? I saw you have all the materials. Are you guys going to build it?
Um, well, we were planning on having help from our, like, fathers and, um...
That's why the dads are here.
And, um, like, have us build it also. That's how far we planned on the building.
Paul, a question for you. Have you talked to, um...
Mr. Bullock.
Ryan, more important than Anne.
Anne, Anne Proto was...
She would have to certify the installs.
Yes, yes.
She's fine with it all, yes.
So we had a meeting with her, actually, and Kelly Pereira, and we talked about, you know, really, when the girls came to me, I said it really needs to be a community effort, that it's not just for this school, that it's for, you know what, it can be for SAC, it can be for Norfolk Recreation, it can be open to the public. It's something that everybody in this town and community could use, and we all felt that that was very beneficial. I mean, I think the girls did a great job, too. They went out to Sudbury, Massachusetts, where there's a Gaga pit actually at that school, and that school uses that for recess, and that was something that I was very interested in. Another option for students here at our school to actually use that as well, so. And very simple, you know, it's a very simple game, and Mrs. Pereira is excited to use it at PE, so.
Is it going to be on the fenced-in section down closer to SAC?
Yes, in the fenced-in section, you know, I said to the girls, I want it in that fenced-in section because I feel that we can protect it somewhat in that way, too.
It'll be down toward the corner.
Yes, in the corner area, yeah, so, yep, yes.
Good. Thank you guys very much.
Good job.
Thank you. Right. So first, I would like to see if there is a motion to approve the design and install of the Gaga pit here in the Freeman Kennedy.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And now I need a motion to approve the fundraising for the said Gaga pit.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, guys. Now, now all the work begins. So thank you very much for doing this.
Good luck.
And you guys can, you guys can leave now unless you want to stay and listen to our very exciting meeting. We have budget meeting.
They have homework.
We have budget, we have budget after this, so it could be like a math homework project for you guys.
Exactly. Have you guys talked to any local construction companies or any lumber companies?
We, I did call those and Home Zico, and they pressed out the word for us, and they said if we want to try to get it donated, we have to just write a letter.
Okay, because I'll talk to you later about that. There may be a couple of construction companies I might have, that might help, so. Why not get it for free if you can?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does somebody need your presentation?
The stick thing, Pam? You have your technical terms down.
No, no, she called it the dipstick thing a few seconds ago, so.
I know, I didn't say anything.
The Gaga stick?
Yeah, the Gaga stick.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you. We appreciate it.
Did I just have that?
All right, thank you.
Who decides who goes in and will get the ball? Is it whoever runs in and gets it?
I don't know.
I think, that's kind of like old fact, is that, it used to be called dodgeball, right?
Yeah, but the ball's rolling.
Don't have to worry about kids getting hit in the head. Someone here grab a bro.
Oh, that's mine, I think. Yep, that's definitely mine.
You can use it.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Here's our audience.
Yeah, I was just saying, well, we had a nice big audience for a little while, but...
Wow.
Just cleared out. We feel so loved.
Next, next thing on my report is the school van. We've had this school van, years ago, we had three or four students in and that we transported, you know, some of the, some of the special needs children that were being placed out of district. And last year, we only had one, and this year, we have none. So what we wanted to do, Dr. Alardi and I were talking about, was, you know, present it to the committee to see if we want to start looking around, asking, you know, priced out what it would sell for, which, you know, probably not a whole heck of a lot, to be honest with you. And also look at other options far as, you know, giving it to another department in town. I know, you know, the fire department, the rec department, the senior center, you know, a couple of other people have expressed interest in it, and to see, you know, work that out in the budget. But wanted to get approval of the board to go forward and start investigating this before we went too far.
So it's not currently doing anything?
It's not, you know, it's sitting in the town hall.
It's sitting there, and the, one of the issues that we have, and I've talked with Todd Hassett about it extensively, is if we were to use the van to transport a student, it means that we have to employ somebody to drive the van that has a 37H license. So you're talking a minimum, probably, of a halftime position in the budget, you know, 20 hours. We had a driver that we had employed in the past. If that driver is out sick, we have to hire a sub-driver. We had, the cost of that for a week was about $1,300. So it's very expensive if you have to hire somebody else to come drive. We don't feel that there's probably any realistic savings by transporting ourselves. We can get better rates through the YCN or through our BIKO contract for student transport. We would be carrying one fewer staff members in terms of the budget, and it also runs some liability. Oftentimes, if you're transporting a child that has significant needs, you might need to also add a bus monitor. So we don't really see a cost savings in holding on to this van and transporting ourself versus contracting out the services, which is what we're doing now. We don't have any local students that we're transporting. And also, because we don't have any students and we don't currently have a driver, we're paying to maintain, you know, licensing on this van and things like that, and it's not of any great use.
Would we transfer ownership of this to whoever would like this?
We can, there's some requirements in terms of if we're going to put it out for public auction, there's some guidelines that we'd have to follow, but, and there's some stipulations in terms of who you can donate it to, but we wanted to get the committees' permission to explore those options at this point.
We're not transporting any children at this point?
No, we haven't been for over a year. Well...
Are children being transported?
End of last year.
Right.
What was that?
Children, some children are being transported?
All of our children. The van only was used to transport students that are in out-of-district placements. The majority of our students that we're transporting, we're transporting through BIKO, through a contract we have for transportation, for special education transportation. The van was used in the past to transport one student, and we had a halftime driver on staff who retired last year. So we were using the van for that purpose. I would say that it was probably cost neutral last year by the time you paid the salary, the benefits of the part-time employee. It was probably a wash. I don't think we saw any savings with what we would have priced it out if we contracted with YCN, which does door-to-door transportation as well. So there doesn't seem to be a cost incentive, and there is some liability risk in taking that on.
And I think that's, you know, to the point is, even if there were cost savings, because I know that's how it was originally pitched, what, you know, you know, the risk versus reward, you know, the cost savings are so minimal versus, you know, if you're saving $5,000 a year and then you have, you know, the driver's out sick for, you know, two different weeks, and you, you know, there goes your entire savings, or if there's a, you know, a mechanical breakdown that you don't foresee, and things like that can eat it up pretty, pretty quickly.
And it's also very difficult for us, you know, like you said, if you have somebody out sick to get a sub for that day. So we were in situations that we were trying to contract with a taxi service to provide transportation for off days. So we don't have a fleet like BIKO has. YCN has hundreds of drivers that they can reassign routes to if needed. So from a management standpoint, it's, it's difficult.
And you don't foresee any issue if we had children that we needed to in the future, in the next couple of years?
I don't know that you'd see, I don't know that it would be worthwhile, because we, we have this extensive, we transport probably 30 students through BIKO. BIKO, we have a contract with for the out-of-district placements, and they, it's a multi-vendor contract, so they deal with several different busing companies to set up those routes, and we get pretty good rates on those. So even if you were transporting several students, I don't think you'd see the savings of employing person to be the driver, and then you'd really have to either hire a sub-driver or contract that workout. I don't think there's a financial incentive to keep the van.
Do you have any idea what it costs to transport one student?
It depends on distance. It depends, and it depends on the way the contract is right now. It depends on the distance and whether there are other students on the route, because they share the route and they divide it. So for transporting, it really can range significantly. You know, it can be from 8,000 to being up to 20,000, depending on the route and the number of students on it.
And I think that was, you know, when it was originally purchased, I think there was three children all going up to Canton, and so, you know, so from the, the way it broke down, you know, it was a saving, it was a significant savings per year, because we had, you know, three kids going.
To one destination.
One destination, and picked up right in town. And, you know, we had control over it, and so that was the, that was the hope, but that was five, six years ago, and then it's...
And we also currently don't have multiple students at one setting, so you wouldn't be able to, you can't drive one kid to Providence and another, you know, our kids are spread out, so it's not like you could create a route that would make sense.
Okay, does anyone have any problems with investigating this?
Not at all.
Investigating, no?
No, this is a way, any, before we sell it or do any transfer, anything like that, it has to come back through the school committee.
Do we have any idea what the book value is on it?
We haven't yet. I just wanted to see if the committee was interested in us exploring the options of...
What years of van?
I, I don't know. I think it's, I think it's five or six years old.
Yeah, I think, yes. Is it a Dodge?
What is it?
10 years?
10 years old.
Did we acquire it new?
Oh, no, 2010.
2010. So it's four years old?
It's four years old.
So it's relatively new.
Do we know what, roughly, how many miles are on it?
I don't have that. I will get that information if you're interested in the possibility of auctioning the van.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know...
Huge car market is terrible right now, so there's limited value to it, even when it's just a four-year-old vehicle.
Yeah.
We don't sell cars nearly what we did a year or two ago, so I doubt there's going to be that much value to it.
And there may be other town departments that, you know, the senior center is looking for a van, the rec department, you know, there may be something we can work out with another town department, I'm not sure. But we can look into all of our options and bring them back.
Extended type van, right? It's even, has a typically a little bit less of a value, because there's sort of a niche market for those, and that's even more difficult to get to.
It's just a big cargo van with bench seating. I mean, it's basically a little mini school bus, I mean, you know, lack of...
I think I've seen it, I just, I was trying to...
Yeah, it's up in, back behind town most of the time.
There are, there are some other districts that are interested, might be interested, like, Millis, I think, has their own bus fleet that might be interested. There's, Anna, you had a district that might be interested. So there are some other districts that might be interested if we choose to go that route.
Interesting.
Now, if we, if, if we do it internally, can we do budget transfers for it?
We might be able to. We haven't, I haven't explored any of it, because I wasn't sure which direction the committee wanted to go.
Okay.
So, you know, we can come with a proposal and have all that information if that's a direction you're willing to explore.
Yeah, I guess my first preference would be the town. If there's something the town department agrees that I would, but if, it's a much better deal to go through Millis, for example, if they want it, then go with that.
Right. Good.
So we'll get the information together for the next meeting.
Okay, contract negotiations. We've sent over our proposal to the Teachers Association, just far as, you know, interest-based bargaining, moving forward with that. And, you know, we had a bunch of, you know, qualifications and some of our ideas on that, and so they're going to be presenting it to their board and getting back to us on that. So we will hopefully be starting negotiations this month. And that's all I have. On to you.
Couple of different things. I just wanted to update the committee on the process of our strategic plan. Our strategic planning committee met last week, and we are at the stage that we have a complete draft, first draft, of the district's three-year strategic plan. It outlines the goals that you approved at the end of the school year, and what we have now is the map of the action steps that will take place under each phase of the plan. We're meeting again on February 6th. We want to take one more read-through, make sure that it's all cleaned up and streamlined, and then I intend to present that to the school committee at our February meeting. And once you approve the draft of the plan, then we'll go further and develop benchmarks, measures for each objective within it. So that will be coming in the February meeting. Also wanted to, I, by policy, am required to give you a quarterly update on bullyinging. And in the fall, we had no incidences of bullying at the HOD school. There was one identified incident at the Freeman Kennedy that was investigated by administration. Appropriate disciplinary procedures were put in place, and, you know, that issue has been resolved as of this point. Okay. The next thing I have for you, and I have information in case anybody is looking for additional information, but I just wanted to talk for a minute about the PARC assessment. The PARC assessment is a new assessment that is being developed. There's actually 19 states that are involved in that consortium. It's the assessment that is being developed with the intent of replacing MCAS. At this stage, the Pearson and Educational Testing Services were contracted to develop the items for the PARC assessment. PARC is a little different than MCAS in that its intent down the road is to be completely an online assessment. There's two different parts of it. There'll be a performance-based assessment students will take near the end of the year, and that assessment will have, be looking at their written language skills, their ability to compare nonfiction text, mathematical problem-solving and reasoning skills. That assessment is one component, it's called a performance-based assessment. Then they also take an end-of-year assessment, which is more of a multiple-choice format that's electronically scored. The PARC assessment's intended to be fully aligned with the Common Core standards, and is intended to be rolled out next year. This year, the PARC, the developers are field testing items. All schools in Massachusetts basically have been required to participate in that field test. So we have been selected to pilot the end-of-year assessment only in math for two of our fourth grade classrooms. The end-of-year assessment is two sessions of two hours each. It's in May, and it will be more the multiple-choice kind of format for the math test. We will be piloting the online version of it. Some districts that don't have the technology capacity in-house yet are piloting in pencil and paper. One of the conditions of the pilot is that we will not get back any individual student data, so kids that participate in the pilot will not get a score. The reason for that is they're field testing the items to ensure that they're reliable and valid and measure what they're intended to measure, so they're not reporting individual data. The only schools that were allowed to really opt out of the field test were schools that were identified as Level 4 schools, that are at risk for state intervention, that haven't been meeting their annual yearly progress targets, or in addition, if you had exceptional circumstances that would prevent you from participating in the pilot, which we do not. So I wanted to let people know, we just received guidelines from PARC. We're not allowed to just select which two classes we want to participate. They want to ensure that the students participating are chosen in random order to ensure the integrity of the pilot. So they've given us guidelines on how those classes will be selected. We'll be doing that in the next week or so. And then we will send information out to parents so that they're aware that the PARC field test will be going on. It'll be, I believe, we'll be able to schedule it, so that it'll be after the math MCAS. But it will be close in, in timing to the, the May math MCAS.
Ingrid, do we have the capabilities and resources right now to take it online?
Yeah, and we are being required to pilot online.
Okay.
Yeah, so we will be. I do have just packets, just so that you can see, this is just general information about PARC as a whole and about the requirements for the pilot, so I have that additional. And then I can, I'm happy to answer, I'll know more about the, what the pilot's going to look like for us over the next month. We just, are, they're starting to send out bi-weekly updates for PARC pilot districts, and we just got the selection criteria, so I'm happy to address any further questions at our next meeting as well.
So just so I understand, PARC itself, we are required to basically take the test, but we will, we will not be given any feedback on it?
Only two of our fourth grades will be piloting the end-of-year math assessment, but we will not get any individual student data, no, because they're testing items. So, you know, they're not sure that the items that they've developed are going to really work well in an online format. There might be some things that are test error, there might be some things that are, you know, just don't fit with that, so they're just testing items to put together into the final test that'll be used next year. So they will not report student data. The advantage for kids that participate in the pilot is to have the experience of going through the online assessment before it goes live next year. So for those students, they'll have a chance to see what the PARC test is like before, before it's implemented and rolled out.
Do we know which classrooms?
We don't, because they just gave us the guidelines on how the classes are going to be chosen. They did not just, they don't want districts just picking and choosing, so they've given us guidelines to make sure that the classes are selected at random. And we're just, we just got those the other day, and we're going to meet to try to get that finalized this week.
I was going to say, you know, I've talked to Ingrid about this, and, you know, I'm not a fan of, you know, of the PARC assessment, and I'm not thrilled with the fact of the, our students being forced to take a test, that we don't get any, you know, the parents don't get any results from, the schools don't get any results from, the district doesn't get any results from, you know, they still have to take the MCAS. And I know this isn't, you know, officially an option... get any, you know, the parents don't get any, um, results from, the schools don't get any results from, the district doesn't get any results from, you know, they still have to take the MCAS, um, and I know this isn't, you know, officially an option, um, but I couldn't find anywhere, you know, in DOE regs or anything like that where it's the law, you know, they are saying that we're required to, but, um, you know, I, I think it's, you know, I, I would actually propose, I would, you know, we can discuss it before I propose the motion, but I would like to allow parents to opt out, um, of this, I mean, you know, the parent, you know, the children are not, you know, it's, it's an additional, you know, stressor on them, you know, after taking MCAS, and especially since it is purely being done to pilot for some other company to make sure that their system works correctly, you know, it looks like, you know, our kids are very, being used as the.
Guinea pigs.
As the research subjects, um, to make sure, you know, it all works correctly and things along those lines, and since we're not getting any results back whatsoever, you know, I personally, as a, as a parent, wouldn't want, you know, my daughter or son to be going through an additional, you know, testing and being taken away from, you know, classroom time and, you know.
How long does a test take?
It's two sessions of two hours each.
Okay.
Um, the, the, if we, if you vote to, to, to allow parents to opt out, we will probably, we will be eliminated, they won't allow you to do that, um, and be part of the pilot, which could be problematic.
In what way?
What was that?
In what way?
I'm.
In what way?
In what way?
In, in the sense that the, the state is trying to finalize, to make sure they have a broad enough.
Yep.
Participation rate, for years, they field-tested MCAS items by embedding non-counted questions in the exam, and that's how they field-tested, so that there is, when you're developing any new test, you have to make sure the test items are valid, so the way they developed the MCAS was there was always items that were, were trial items embedded in the test.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
The question is, I understand what they're trying to do, how will it affect us?
Right, how will we be penalized?
As a, as a school district.
Well, what will happen is they'll have to find another school to pick up the test and they'll reassign the, um, grade levels, um.
But how will that still negatively affect us, I mean, how will we find, we won't, I mean.
I don't see how it'll affect us negatively.
We won't necessarily be, um, I mean, the commissioner is strongly encouraging districts to participate, he's looking to have a valid field test, um, if we choose not to do that, then it just places the burden on another public school, they need, they need sufficient, and we're only, and it does disadvantage us in the sense that we won't have any live experience with what it's like to administer the PARK, what glitches you might run into technologically, and we're not gonna have an option as to whether or not to give the PARK, if the state goes that direction, all our kids will do that instead of MCAS, so the advantage of field testing is, we haven't tried the technology in an online system, we don't know what the administration might be like, what glitches, how much staffing you're gonna need to oversee that, so there is some value to going through the process, making sure you work out your technological glitches and making sure we have a good test that we own in the end, um, but if you choose not to participate, then I would have to notify the state and they would have to find another school to take on that end-of-year test.
If we took part in this, then you'd be able to provide that feedback to them?
That's the whole goal, they want our feedback on the test administration.
So it's not that we're just doing this in a vacuum, you can then say, okay, this needs to be worked on, this needs to be worked on.
Yes, these are the things that didn't go smoothly, these are the items that didn't seem to resonate with kids, yes, we will have the opportunity and that will shape, that's why they're field-testing this year instead of just going live.
I do kind of, I do agree with Sean though, where this is adding another stressor to the kids, I know, I was part of, in high school, we were part of the class that was testing the MCAS, and quite frankly, from my own experience, when the kids know that it's just a test run, a lot of people don't take it seriously, we just goofed off on the MCAS, God only knows what I think.
Different though in high school versus fourth grade, they're gonna give their best effort.
They do.
I mean, I've, I've just, I mean, times, times have changed, I mean, we're talking about the early to mid, early nineties first now, you know, not to give away my age, but, you know, it's one of those things, if we were getting feedback from the state, if we knew what the, uh, scores were, if we knew what the data was showing, then I could maybe agree, but I have to, I'm gonna probably side with Sean on this, because it's just, it's another example of using our kids as guinea pigs, and it's just not something that we should put.
I was gonna say.
I'm not sure, I, I, I wouldn't say that it's using the kids as guinea pigs, this is an assessment that they're going to be measured on annually every year, you know, that would be, it's going to replace MCAS, so I think it's making sure it's a fair, good test.
So Ingrid.
And there's no way to do that without piloting items.
The state's position is essentially, this will replace.
Yeah, that's the direction they're going, this is coming.
All right.
Now, there's some pushback and debate in terms of inner-city urban schools that are struggling with the technology infrastructure to support PARK, but that's why they're piloting also the paper pencil version.
But essentially, those that have the resources and capability.
The direction that we've got from the commissioner is that PARK is going to be replacing MCAS, and that's the direction they're headed, you know, again, he, he softened that language a little bit and said pending the results of the field test, but that is the, the push on the state.
But it, but it's not, it, it has not been determined, um, black and white that it is going to be replacing, that's the direction they're heading, there's, there's substantial pushback, you know, around the state, you know, other school committees, um, you know, in the legislature, you know, and things along those lines that are pushing back against PARK from the standpoint of, you know, you know, and against Common Core as a whole, so, you know, I would, I would disagree with Ingrid Vince for much that this is definitely gonna be replacing MCAS, because I don't think that has been decided yet, um, I also would disagree from the standpoint of it gives, you know, if we, if you go with the example of that it does give, you know, these students and, you know, an advantage, um, going forward, then why are you doing it only for half of the fourth grade or two classes out of the fourth grade, so that means we have a very select group of the, of our students that now have a distinct advantage over, you know, the rest of the students in their, of their peers in that same level, um, and I just, you know, and I'm not saying we shouldn't go forward and do it, I'm just saying that I think it's a parents' rights issue, and if a parent, if none of them choose to opt out, then, then so be it, you know, same with, you know, the Boston College study that we had going on last, last week, you know, where their, you know, our, you know, it's kind of a, kind of a research project.
Yep.
And if they, you know, parents want to opt out, they should be given that, you know, authority, whether it's, you know, whether it's the, you know, the MCAS or the, or the PARK or sex ed or whatever, I mean, this is, this is, you know, a, a public school and these are taxpayers and these are, you know, the responsibility relies, lies with the parent on protecting their children and determining what's right for their children, not necessarily saying because the Department of Education said that we have to do it, then we have to do it, so that's, that's my argument, my counter-argument.
Says it takes a total of eight to nine hours.
And I guess, all I'm saying in terms, I'm sorry, what?
Says it takes a total of anywhere from eight to nine hours of time.
The performance-based assessment, no, the one that we're being requested to pilot is the two end-of-year math, uh, the end-of-year math assess, assessment, which is two sessions of two hours each, um, and I, I understand Sean's point, I guess what I'm saying is that we don't have the flexibility of giving parents the option because PARK will disqualify us if we don't randomly select and all students participate, so I'm not saying that you can't decide that, I'm saying if you decide that you want to opt in, we will not be able to participate, um, in the pilot.
Well, I'll make a motion that I, I believe that parents should be given the opportunity to opt out of the PARK assessment.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion?
I don't even know if that's a correct motion, because if it's, you're either in or out, I mean, if we don't want to do it, then it shouldn't just be, because we know the end result will be if we, if the parents opt out and the people opt out, we're out of the program, so I don't know if the motion should be, should we even agree to participate in the program from the get-go versus delaying this and dragging this on further?
But I, I, I don't know if anyone's presented to the DOE or to PARK, whether, whether, if, if an opt-out is a result, if they've automatically said you'd be disqualified.
They, they do because they're trying to make sure that the, the field study is randomly selected and there's, that will skew the results, if it's a opt-in, opt-out, they can't guarantee that, that the, that it is valid, do you know what I mean, do you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So they will.
Analytics are off if you don't have the.
Right, you can't guarantee that the population opting out is similar to the population opting in, so.
Ingrid, have you been to any classes of seminars, webinars, anything along PARK, regarding PARK?
Yes, quite a few, quite a few.
Okay, and with all that information that you've gathered, what percentage is definitive that we're, that the state is gonna actually do it?
Well, it's changed, originally, it was definitely the direction that we were going and there was no, it was, we are going with PARK.
Okay.
What happened over the course of the last year was that a lot of superintendents were pushing back in terms of, we, um, we haven't seen any test items, we haven't, we don't know what this test is gonna look like, um, we have issues in terms of accountability ratings and the target, AYP targets, and how is PARK gonna skew that data for districts that are trying to get out of, um, level-four status, things like that, and a lot of the urban districts, the initial intent of PARK is all online, um, and so there's a lot of districts that don't have the capacity to have that many devices available for students, um, don't have the capital budget to replace those, so there was a lot of pushback, so the most recent change was that the commissioner was saying, well, we will, um, the Board of Ed voted to go forward with the pilot, um, the, there's a strong push to go with PARK, there is, as Sean said, there is pushback, um, because, you know, a lot of people feel the MCAS test is, um, a, a good, solid, valid test, um, and, you know, we have multiple years of data on that instrument, so, um, I think it could go either way, um, if PARK is adopted and we haven't participated in the pilot, we have the disadvantage of never having administered an online assessment and never worked through our own technological, um, glitches with that, but, you know, I think it's really up to the committee, the direction that you choose to go, um, I know a lot of our staff members, um, were interested in the pilot, so we could take a look at what the items were, we could have a better sense of what that process was gonna look like, is it really, do our kids have the technology skills, the keyboarding skills, you know, it, you learn from that, um, and that can help inform your instruction if we end up going that direction, so.
At this point in time, based on everything you've seen so far, you think it's greater than fifty percent chance?
That we'll end up with PARK?
Mm-hmm.
I think there's a really good possibility.
So, yes.
Yeah, I think, I, but, you know, it really depends on how the pilot goes, you know, if it's a disaster in a lot of districts and, you know, um, then that could shape what happens moving forward.
Well, I was gonna say, and I also find it very disingenuous that they're like, oh, we want to have this completely unbiased study and, and we don't want anybody opting out, except we're gonna let certain districts opt out, and we're gonna let certain, you know, oh, you're a level-four school, which I would argue would be the ones that you would be most concerned about, far as, you know, their, their, their testing is, is the worst and then their testing is, you know, is most problematic and their, you know, you got, you know, you know, a little, you know, suburbia Norfolk, you know, where, you know, the kids all have iPads and things along those lines, it's going to be an easier, it's going to be a skewed.
Right.
Selection.
And they're probably.
From a standpoint as opposed to an inner-city school that has, you know, that is, that is level-four and has all sorts of, you know, issues that they are saying, well, you know, since you guys have a bunch of issues and, you know, you're, you're already having a problem, we're gonna let you guys opt out, but.
It's more that, for the level-four schools, the reason they're doing it is that you have a performance target to get out of that status that you have to hit on your next administration of MCAS, so they're feeling for those schools that are at, that have been working on improvement plans, that it could compromise their ability to show progress if the kids, uh, if you are selected to pilot both, you can opt out of taking the MCAS at all, which means they have no data set for their comparative growth, um, and they're concerned about it getting in the way of the, those districts that have been, um, working towards making progress, that they would have difficulty demonstrating that they've made those gains by introducing another assessment in that testing window.
But the other issue is too with the underperforming schools, where the park, I'm guessing the way that I'm understanding the PARK assessment will show another way that these schools are still underperforming, and that would probably skew the state's results to show the test not being too, too great and therefore maybe throwing off the data that they want to present, you know, I mean, if parents want to opt out, I'm fine with that, it's not saying that they're going to, we just want to give them the option.
But I, I'll, and, and I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying that, I think Thomas is right, that if that's the decision, you're opting out of PARK, because we do not have the capacity to give parents the choice to be part of the pilot study, so if you choose that, that's, that's up to the committee, it just means you're deciding that we will not participate in the pilot.
The tough one is, two sides to it, I mean, I agree with Sean's point, they're not prepared for it, every piece of information I've heard from here, as well as the KP, there's no definitive plans, they don't really know which way they're going, the questions get asked to them, they don't really give you the answers, however, we do have the capabilities, we do have the ability of taking it, and it is four hours, I mean, that's not a lot of time, you can go both ways on it, I mean, you have to embrace the change, but at the same point, I mean, you sit there and tell parents they have to do something where the state's not even prepared for.
Well, especially from the standpoint of we don't get any results.
Right.
You know, we, you know, you know, except for the, you know, you know, we could have, you know, you know, you know, the teachers thought this, you know, worked well and the kids all pushed the right buttons and, you know, and, and the software worked.
Yep.
You know, if that's the only benefit we're getting out of it, I mean, that's, you know, that's beta-testing someone else's program.
Right, I agree.
If, if we're not getting any results except seeing some of the questions that may or may not be on in the future and the type of questions that, it's a test model, it's a beta-model anyway, so who knows if that's what the type of questions is gonna be on in the future, it just, I, I just don't see, I don't see any benefit for our students.
Are we certain we don't get any test results?
Yes.
You don't get individual, you'll get some general information back and, but you won't get any individual student data.
And not per district.
That, no, they'll give global information about the, the administration and that will help make the decision as to whether to move forward with PARK.
But we're not gonna get, this is what Norfolk rated, you know, we're, we're gonna get, in Massachusetts, that it, it, it worked well or it didn't work well.
But along the same lines, if we didn't do well, it's not gonna be held against us either.
No.
So.
Right, but we have no way to know.
Four, it's, it's tough.
I mean, I'll be very honest with you, the, the rollout of PARK, we, you know, there's valid reasons people are pushing back and, um, as, as part of the Superintendent's Association, I have certainly voiced concerns about the way the Department of Ed has rolled this out, so I, I want to be clear with that, that they have, you know, we're just getting the information on how to select the classrooms, things like that, um, so there have been some issues, there, um, the technological requirements are significant for urban districts that don't have the capital revenue, so there are issues with it, um, my concern is that in the end, it might be the assessment that we own, so how well-prepared are we to give it and how well-prepared are we to make sure that we're preparing our students for it and do they have the right skill set to?
There's a lot of schools that aren't technology-ready.
Yeah.
To even administer this test, so how could they be mandated to do that?
They're doing it in paper and pencil.
Okay.
Yeah, most schools in the Commonwealth are participating, KP is participating, most, most schools have been, they pretty much selected everybody, what they tried to do with the pilot is because PARK has two different assessments, they have the performance-based, which is, again, it's more the, um, that's the part that's hand-scored, so it's the comparative, it's narrative writing, it's scenarios that kids have to problem-solve, uh, that's given closer to the April-May timeline, um, and then you have the end-of-year assessment, what they tried to do was that, so that they weren't tapping out kids and they weren't piloting both in multiple places, was to select one or two grades in each district to pilot only one of the assessments, there's a very few districts piloting both, so they tried to spread it out that way so it wouldn't be as.
When MCAS rolled out, I know they did their trial, but then after the trial, after they did their beta-test, there were, wasn't there a couple of years where the people were taking the test to get used to it, but it didn't really matter, and then it went on to say, now you have to pass this in order to graduate?
Yeah, the graduation requirement did not come in right away.
So, I'm figuring that if the PARK assessment's gonna replace MCAS, even after the beta-testing is done, they're still gonna give schools time to get used to it, just like they did with the MCAS, it would only make sense, because not every school's gonna be testing it, so even if we don't get to, we're gonna be in the same boat as other schools that didn't get to, and so they gotta give everyone an opportunity to get acquainted with the system, get acquainted with the test.
They'll have practice tests and sample items released.
Right, so, I mean, even if we opt out of it, we're not really losing out, we're gonna still learn what's involved, we're still gonna get the opportunity to do it We're still gonna get the opportunity to do it if we go with the program and get used to it. And we just won't maybe do the beta test.
We are taking the lesser of the two tests, correct?
Yeah, the lesser.
The downside I could see if you're not part of this is that you then don't get to participate in the feedback and you don't get to then be part of any changes that need to be made. And then if this is, we, this, we don't know, but if this is mandated, then we're just stuck with it. And we may be stuck with a product we don't like at all versus if we're at least part of it, we can hopefully influence it. I don't know how much or whatever, or how.
But you can share your feedback and you can, yes, you can be part of shaping the form that the final product takes.
I would imagine others would be along that lines too. I mean, I don't think we're totally revolutionary, so I mean, I'd imagine we'd be somewhat consistent. But I, that would make me a little uncomfortable not to give us a chance to be part of this if, if we end up opting out of it.
Yeah, or on either side, too. If we go through the process and experience it and it's really not the right fit, then we have more information for that, too.
So based on what you've seen so far, do you recommend to or not to?
I would recommend piloting at the fourth grade in those two classes. But I certainly can understand the argument on the other side, so.
Sean, you made, I mean, you make a valid point.
What are, the other question I had for you, what are our costs from a, from a man-hour standpoint? From a, you know, loading the software for?
It's an online assessment, so they'll just go to the site. So we don't have to do anything really with that. Our tech team has been informed of the tech requirements for, I mean, they've been doing surveys with districts for the last several years to make sure that you have the right technology, the right, this isn't my forte, but the right kind of system, operating base, all that stuff. And they made sure that you had all those requirements before they selected people to pilot the online. So we have all that in, in.
It's not software-based, it's entirely cloud-based.
What was that?
It's entirely cloud-based.
I would just.
The Park system.
Yeah, I would assume, so it's all online.
Yep.
It's not software-based.
No, I know, are, are our students being used, are they being assigned a, is it, is it completely anonymous? Is it?
Yes.
Are they being assigned a number or are they just being assigned, or is just 50 of our students going on?
I don't have all the details, but I believe it's a number.
When we randomly select, from what I've read thus far.
Yeah.
That they have to upload, they're taking the October 13th date, they have 2013 SIMS data. So from that data, they're gonna upload all of our kids' information that we.
Yeah, so that they have a username and all that, so they can log in.
So they will, they will have the information after.
Yeah.
So, so Park will have our students?
They'll have the, the, yes, they will have, they have to set up an account for each kid, so they will have the, the name and they'll create a username. But the report, the reporting, my understanding is that it's all aggregate data, there's no individual, they're not even analyzing it on the individual level.
And, and from the SIMS data that we're reporting up to Park, what, we're just using their student ID number or?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a student ID number, so my assumption would be that student ID number is just going up with the kids' information.
So we're not, we're not linking up any MCAS data?
No, they're not tied to anything. They just have to set up a username and account.
No, it's no prior information, it's, it's almost like setting up a brand-new account. But it's limited data because all they want to look at is just the analytics.
Any further discussion?
The other thing that I would point out too, that I think is in our favor a little bit is, is our new Go Math curriculum right now that we do use, is our students are doing their unit tests and their chapter tests.
Online.
In the same way, so we're trying to prepare the students that way. So all students, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders are doing that, you know.
They're taking their Go Math online.
That is very helpful. It's good, quick information for teachers in regards to the reports that we instantly get to turn around and look at how class is doing. And I would agree with Dr. Jackson as to, I'd like to be able to get the kinks out now as well. I think that everybody makes valid points here, when you know there's a lot of things on the table. But if this is gonna come down the line, then we need to prepare ourselves ahead of time. And I'd rather do it with two classes versus I know I'm gonna have to do 530 kids coming down the line. In order for me to prepare for MCAS, I start like three weeks ago, I'm starting, it's a, it's a big process.
So you feel by your involvement, your, both the administrative staff as well as the teachers would be better prepared for future?
There you go, I do. And I eventually feel that somehow that they have to release some type of data to us, you know.
We'll get aggregate information.
I feel that, you know, okay, they may do it by state or they may do it by New England or the states that are, you know, participating in this and say, okay, generally as a state, all fourth graders, I think that they're gonna have to do that somehow. Because I think, you know, what, superintendents and principals are gonna knock on Park's door and say, listen, you can't make us do all of this, you're not gonna meet us halfway.
We will get some, probably trend, global aggregate data.
Which, I mean.
It's not at the student level.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, us versus Brockton versus, you know, Agawam, I mean, you know, if you're mixing them all together and they're, and they're, you know, they're a much.
Interstate versus suburban.
Right, I mean, there's, I mean, if you're not, if you're not breaking it out, it really doesn't do us any good, except for, you know.
I don't think the data matters, I think it's the test.
It's the test preparation is shaping what that looks like and having a voice in that.
Okay, any other, any further discussion?
My, one of my other concerns.
Wait a second, Kelly. No, no, Kelly, go.
Would you expect that there would be any pre-work to do for this?
They do have, they do have, they will release some sample items. Again, it's all online, our kids go to the computer lab, so if a teacher wanted to have them try. But we've actually used some of the sample Park items just as instructional teaching points for other kids. So I, I don't think that it'd be intensive preparation, but would teachers maybe use some of the sample items during their lab time? I, I could see that.
Mark?
Never mind, I was gonna go somewhere around the same way.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to allow parents to opt out of the Park, the Park assessment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. I oppose.
So you're opposed? Okay, so three to two, to opt out.
All right, the next item is preschool programming and Anna is here to talk about the, some changes she's recommending to the preschool and then we are going to share with you the recommended tuition rates. So Anna, you wanna jump here so you can have a microphone?
No, it's just the one page, the tuition rate that she just gave us.
It's probably up here for you, Thomas.
There you go.
Oh, there, sorry. Just exhibit seven?
Exhibit seven, very.
Exhibit seven, very good.
It's very short, sweet, simple, and to the point.
So thank you for having us tonight and for considering our request. About two years ago, we were issued with a charge to kind of take a look at our preschool programming and look at expanding some of our preschool programming. When Dr. Jackson was here, we undertook that charge and looked at offering some different preschool programs, which we implemented last year. We have our transitional kindergarten program that we've offered in the past that wasn't always offered. And we've also expanded our preschool program to include some opportunities for more time in school and longer school days for some of our preschool students who need a little bit more practice and preview of the preschool curriculum. As you know, we're mandated, when a student turns three years old, to evaluate and consider students and qualify them for special education programming if, if they do qualify. So, so what we have here at this point is, we had a really successful year last year. Got a lot of really positive feedback. So what we're doing now is we're trying, trying to refine some of our preschool program. We've had some, we have a regular communication session every Friday morning where we meet as a team, a preschool team, and we look at programming and look at incoming students. And so what I'd like to do right now is just talk a little bit about the two areas that we're looking to change for next year. The first area has to do with the extended half-day for our three-year-olds. This year, we have offered a five-day program. Next year, what the team is recommending is that we reduce it to a four-day program for typically developing students. And we offer the fifth day as a non-integrated day. And basically, what that means is when we talk about our integrated days, we talk about the days where our regular education students and our special education students are educated together. When we talk about our non-integrated day, we invite our special education students to come back one day to have extra preview and practice of the skills that are needed in order to participate in those integrated days. So for example, if you look at, and all of our preschool programs offer that, with the exception of that one particular program. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to reduce that for our typically developing students. We'd like to go from five days to four days and offer that fifth day as a non-integrated day for this special education students in that particular classroom. Are there any questions about that?
So you're not allowing non-special education students to do a fifth day?
Exactly, exactly. So the students that qualify for special education and have individualized education programming would be coming back an additional day, as they do in the other programs that are, that are offered. So for example, if you look at our half-day for three-year-olds, the, all students come on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Our special education students come on Wednesday for that preview and practice. And if you look at the four-year-old program for the half-day there, the four-year-olds come four days. They come Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and then the non-integrated day is Friday. If you take a look at the extended half-day for three and four-year-olds, a multi-age class, those students come to school on Monday through Thursday from 8:30 to 12:00. And then the students come in the afternoon for the non, they stay for the afternoon and participate in a non-integrated afternoon from 12:30 to 2:30, or from 12:00 to 2:30 because they eat lunch here at school. So, so we have some different options on the table. And we, the team felt that the students that participate in that three, that extended half-day program would benefit from a non-integrated day. But the implication of that is that we would then, when you adjust the tuition, and we can talk about that in a minute, it, it impacts the tuition a little bit.
Now, why, why are you having no program afternoon on Fridays?
Friday afternoons are reserved for special education team meetings. So that's when we get together and we hold all of our team meetings and we, annual reviews. We also do all of the initial evaluations of the three-year-olds that are transitioning from early intervention into the school setting. So we run a lot of our meetings in that afternoon. That's very typical for preschool programming. Most preschool programs have that half-day reserved for special education team meetings.
But currently, the TK program is nine to three, Monday through Friday.
That's right.
And so you're reducing it by three hours, but proposing keeping the price the same.
Well, we can adjust, exactly, that's, that's what we're doing. Actually, this year, Joan Morriston. I thought she dismissed that day. Yeah, the tuition should, I was gonna say, we can consider, yeah, we can consider that, but anyway. Trying to think about that for a minute, okay. Well, we could certainly come back to the table and adjust that.
Sorry, go ahead, Thomas.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's a question I have with the.
Sure.
Following up on Sean's point there, so currently, right now, it's nine to three, Monday through Friday. I'm talking the transition year.
Right.
To kindergarten. I'm just trying to think from a community standpoint, that, that'd be really tough for the working parents. Like, what do you, you've got to figure out one day a week to have your kid taken care of or, I mean, it's kind of a difficult thing to surmount where now they've, where previously that's been something they've been able to rely on through the program. That's just sort of an odd, I understand what you're saying as far as scheduling and that's the typical thing of doing it, but that just seems a little.
But can you just repeat your question again at the beginning? Yeah?
You've got, as it stands right now, when you, like, for my daughter, when she utilizes this program, she'll go to nine to three, Monday through Friday.
Sure.
The same thing, whatever it is.
Sure, sure.
Now you've got, I'm, I'm talking for the working parent perspective, now you've got this odd day.
Right.
Where you now have to.
You mean Friday?
Figure something out, care for your child at one day. I mean, I know, I realize it's not insurmountable, you can get past it, but it's just, it's just odd.
But, but there's not a SAC option, there's not, nothing.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Well, that's, that's the second piece of my conversation. What I wanted to do is talk about the adjustment in time for our transition kindergarten program because right now, our, our transition to kindergarten program is offered from 8:30 to 2:30. And what we wanted to do was we wanted to offer it from nine to three so that the students could seamlessly transition into the after-school program. Right now, when they dismiss at 2:30, there's a gap between 2:30 and three. And there, there isn't coverage at that point for those students or parents. Some parents are actually bringing their students back, they're picking them up at 2:30 and they're bringing them back to the SAC program. We'd like a seamless transition from three, from, you know, dismissal of three to.
No, that part makes sense.
Yeah, but you're talking about the Friday.
But, but unless it, but unless it changed from last year to this year, I mean, last year was 8:45 to 2:45.
Right.
So it, so it wasn't till 2:30. So I mean, basically, when my son got done at 2:30, 2:45.
Yeah.
He basically went to SAC because they were getting, you know, an extra, you know, an extra five minutes early, wasn't a problem. Whereas I, I agree with Thomas from this standpoint, you know, if, all of a sudden, you know, I have it set up and both myself and my wife are working. Now all of a sudden, we have to try to find some sort of daycare from 12:00 to 3:00. Before SAC is gonna, and I mean, I wouldn't have sent my child here, especially, you know, especially at 70, 200 bucks a year. It's not like it's a, you know.
No.
It's, it's, you know, it's, it's not the least expensive option around, if, you know, and then now you're making it more difficult on top of it.
That's just, that's a tough block of time to find.
On Friday afternoon.
I think the nine to three portion during the day is fine.
I think they're dismissing it noontime this year though, but we can take a look at the, at the, I mean, this year we adjusted, right. I can, I can, all right.
We, well, let's put it, let's put it this way, we didn't.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that and say, right, is that this year?
And last year was the first time the.
First, last year was, the first year was in there and it ended at 2:45. So, I mean, if it's been, if it's been changed to being a noon, it didn't come through school committee, so.
Right, no, no, yeah, okay, all right. So we can take a look at readjusting the tuition on that, okay.
But I know, I, I, I wouldn't readjust the tuition, I think it's, I think it's, the hours are more important.
Yeah, I was.
Taking a look, that might be, yeah, I wanna, I wanna go back to the team on that because, let me, let me just go back to the team on that. Can I, can I go back to the preschool team?
Yeah, I do remember that you look at the first two programs, the change that we talked about was the extended half-day program dropping that Friday. And the idea being that parents can still have a three-day option and a five-day option. If we take that program out, then we can basically add in a four-day option.
That's right.
Instead of a three-day option, a four-day option, and a five-day.
That's right.
The petite transition to kindergarten program, I think you need to pull that off of this.
Well, and this eliminates, this eliminates what we're seeing here, there is no five-day program for half-day either.
Right.
You only, you only have a four-day program for half-days.
Well, you do have a five-day program in that you have that extended half-day, Monday through Thursday. And Friday offers, that, that is a five-day, it's a five-day, it's a five-day program, but it's a half-day program for your typically developing peers.
Okay, I misunderstood that, I thought.
But, but no after, no afternoon half-day, I guess, is that the?
The afternoon, what we do is we retain the students, our special education students, who have more involved programming. And they, they attend the afternoon session from 12:00 to 2:30. And that's when they get a lot of their special education programming. So it's an extended day for our special education students.
Okay, and on the extended half-day, why is Friday starting a half hour later?
We start a half hour later on Fridays, it's a communication time, which is, which is a time where our preschool team gets together and we talk about students that are transitioning to, into early, from early intervention into our district. We talk about evaluating students, we, we plan for team meetings, we talk about programming. It's, it's a common model that's used, it's a common time that's used for preschool programs. Friday, it's, it's a common planning time, basically.
I, I guess I'm just looking, I was gonna say, from a, over compli, you know, complexity from a, from a parent's standpoint is, you know, there, you know, yeah, these are all great if you only have a pre-K child, but if you also have a, as in my, my situation, where I have, you know, one over here and one, and, you know, and, you know, a pre, you know, like I did last year, a TK and a, you know, first grader. You know, dropping one off at 8:30 and then driving over here to drop the other one off and then driving that back over there to drive the other one off. Just not, you know, you know, it, it's, it's much more cumbersome than it, than it needs to be. And I, and I think that, I think that would be, I can't speak for all parents, but it would definitely be frustrating for me if I'm, you know, you know, playing musical chairs in the morning, it's hard enough getting kids out of the door as, as Lisa can attest to, as, as, as she sees me with my, Emma dragging her backpack out of the door in the morning. She is always.
I just want to double-check that time, that dismissal time for the Fridays.
Starts earlier than regular school day, and it starts, so the disadvantage of not having educators start day is those teachers can't be at any staff room that they do to get their kids off the bus before the staff meeting's over. I think with a nine o'clock start, even if you have kids at both schools, I mean, you, you might be nine or two at one and.
Oh, I'm just saying that, you know, TK last year was starting at 8:45. And so you could drop them, all of them off at 8:45 and, and that was fine. Whereas if you're dropping one off at 8:30, then you either have 15 minutes to wait till you can drop off the next one because I can't drop off my first grader until 8:45.
But the 8:30 is the current time, it starts, so it changes what.
And part of it is, is, it just gives.
But currently, the reason to do that is because of the parent drop-off.
That's exactly right.
On buses, to try to get the cars and kids unloaded and out before the buses start.
That's right.
Eight thirty is the current.
That's accurate, yeah. It just avoids a lot of, you know, it's for our younger students, it's just kind of an easier transition into the building, a safer, you know, safety.
But wouldn't you want to keep it at eight thirty on Fridays as well?
Well, as Ingrid had alluded to.
That, that reason you gave us that makes it easier for Monday through Thursday, it also applies to Friday.
Right.
Safety, safety is only on Monday through Thursday. Friday ain't a hell of one. It's a free-for-all.
I understand what you're saying. There needs to be.
Let's just say it's.
We have.
Let's see how fast you can run on Fridays.
Yeah, we did have one year, the first year that we started the, the programming, where we didn't have a communication. So we've always had this communication time on Friday. And historically, I took over the preschool programming, you know, when I, when I started a year ago. But historically, from what I understand, they've always. But historically, from what I understand, they've always had this half-hour, forty-five minutes built into the programming. And the first year that I was there, they didn't have it, and it was, it was tricky. I mean, there's a lot of good planning that happens, and I understand, you know, it's just, it's the time that seems to work for the team. The year that we didn't have this half-hour built in last year, it wasn't. It's definitely an asset for the programming and for the planning of this, for the students.
Because it couldn't happen later in afternoon.
Yeah.
The eight-thirty time allows you to come in prior to the buses starting to unload. They start unloading at eight-forty-five, so on Friday, the kids are coming after. So you're still scanning around the track as well. I mean, they're still unloading, but a lot of buses are.
But in this scenario, also, you have from twelve to three. What's going on on the transition to kindergarten with the teacher from twelve to three?
Those are team meetings.
Yeah. Those are our special education.
Is it the eight-thirty, from eight-thirty to nine, a team meeting?
Can you explain that?
Sure.
Can you explain the difference?
Sure. So, so the eight-thirty, so the eight, well, technically, we meet at eight-twenty. From eight-twenty until nine o'clock, the preschool teachers meet together, and it's like a professional learning community. It's where we really sit down together as a preschool team, and we talk about, and we plan for students that are coming in versus the afternoon where we meet with families. We meet with special education teams, and we review individualized education programming with families and with other providers, sometimes outside providers through EI. But we run our annual team meetings and our three-year reevaluations. So the morning piece on Friday is just, you know, it's a collaboration time for professionals versus the afternoon, which is where we run our special education annual initial reevaluate.
What are you doing now? Because you don't, you say you don't have this, this half-hour.
We didn't have it last year.
They don't have the half-hour and the three-hour.
So last year, we didn't have the Friday planning time, and it was really, it was really challenging. So one thing that the team had asked for last year was that this year, we build in that Friday morning planning time.
So you have the nine o'clock stretch this year?
Yes. Just on Fridays, though. Just on Fridays.
So the only change from this year that is being recommended is that dropping that Friday from that four-day program. And we look.
You know what? I just want to go back to the team. I, I, yeah. I'm not feeling, yeah.
But I don't remember discussing changing the, from eight-thirty to the half-hour change on Fridays through our committee either. I mean, any of you?
I don't recall much. I'm not really your best.
This is, this, these changes are.
But if you're, but if you're dropping time, it should revisit tuition. Well, I mean, I know it had to be this year because last year, it, last year it wasn't because I had a child, you know, and Thomas, we had children in the program, so. So, I mean, I guess, I mean, we're, you know, we're talking to three and a half. And right, and currently, the, the three hours in the afternoon, when, you know, so that's every week. I mean, do we have that many current parent meetings and IEP meetings going on? So when are they being done now?
They're being done in the afternoon from twelve to three on Friday afternoon.
And what's, and what's a typical IEP?
Typical IEP can go from anywhere from an hour to two hours, depending on, I mean, we have a very, we have, we have a very involved preschool program with some involved, you know, programming for several students in our preschool. And those meetings can go anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours. You know, typically, an annual team meeting goes an hour. A reevaluation or an initial, we typically plan about an hour to an hour and a half. But for more, some of our more involved programming, we can go up to two hours, so.
So currently, on, from twelve to three on Friday afternoons, there's a sub in the TK?
The student.
The question, teacher, they're not all meetings are on Friday right now. They're different times, but when you do.
The preschool meetings are all on Friday.
Okay. So you bring a sub.
Yes. Well, no, because the students dismiss at noontime, with the exception of the transitional kindergarten classroom.
Yeah, but let's, let's, for, for traditional, you know, transition, right now, what, you bring in a sub for twelve to three?
We have, we have program aides, and we have assistants in those classrooms who cover, you know, programming for those students. Under the direction of the classroom teacher.
I would, I would like my time and to look at the transition K program with you.
Yes. I agree with that.
On the prevention on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
I'm comfortable with the other recommendations.
Yeah. I agree with that. I'd like to, I'd like to as well have a conversation with you about that.
Just so I'm clear now. I'm sorry. I know you've said this ten times. I just want to make sure I have this right. So the extended half-day now, the Monday through Thursday, or Monday through Friday one, with the three and four-year-old. What is the actual times of that program?
So I just want to be clear. You're looking at.
As it stands, right now.
The second extended half-day program?
Correct.
So right now, that time is not changing. That time is staying the same. So it's Monday through Thursday for typically developing peers, eight-thirty to twelve. And on Friday, it's nine to twelve.
And that's as of right now?
Yeah. That's what they do right now.
Yes, currently. And we're not proposing to change that. The only thing that we're really proposing to change is the other half-day program, the very first one that's listed there, the extended half-day.
The Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yes. We're proposing to go from four days, from five days to four days. The second half-day, the second extended half-day program has special education programming for special, for students in the afternoon from twelve to two-thirty. Okay?
So for a three-year-old, there's no option for afternoon whatsoever. Four-year-olds.
If you're a special education student, then you would have that option of a, of an afternoon if you're in that extended half-day program. For four-year-olds, right. So we have a.
I thought all the extended half-days ended at noon.
They do, unless you're a special education student who qualifies for an afternoon program.
Okay. And that's not listed on here?
No. We only listed the typically developing programs.
Okay. No, that's where I was getting confused. I'm like, all right.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see where I'd fit them in.
If you'd like, I can revisit this, and I can do a non-integrated, I can show you what the non-integrated portion of the day looks like, if you'd like me to identify.
I think that would, I think that would be helpful for me to see how it's all broken out for both, both.
What's current and then what's proposed, so you can, it's easier to say.
Current. And also, special ed, education students, non-special education students, and, you know, and which classes are commingled or whatever, integrated.
All integrated. Right. They're all at least fifty percent integrated.
What am I missing there?
Right. Currently, we have.
Well, no, but, but some of them aren't from the standpoint of if in the afternoon, it's only for special education students. So, I mean, we'll, we'll see that that's.
Yeah, that's, and that's typical. They have the integrated afternoon.
I'd like to see broken out which are, all right, these are integrated, these are not. And this is not integrated only with special ed.
And I think the advantage that we have, I think will help in comparison to what exists to what is next year.
Yes.
Right.
Sure. I can, I can.
Really, the programming we're recommending for next year is exactly what is currently being offered, with the exception of that one program we're using by the day. So we can, but we can put it in a way that it's much easier to read. And I think the transition to kindergarten program needs to be better, reduced in hours and more on Friday makes sense.
Yeah, because I think that would be very difficult.
So we'll bring that back.
Yeah. I just, I want to double-check with that. I don't know if that's a misprint or not, so. All right. Great. I can get that information for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stop yawning.
Okay. The other thing that we have for tonight, we, we had talked as a committee and voted to move the timeline for kindergarten registration forward to January. So kindergarten registration will be taking place. It's gone live and will be taking place over the next two weeks of January. We've sent notices out to all the public, private, private preschools, as well as connected messages out to parents. The goal of that was for us to get a better projection on K enrollment earlier in the year so that would help us with budget. So I want to let you know that we've gone forward and done that. The, I would recommend that the committee vote to approve the full-day kindergarten tuition so that we can get that information out, because as parents are making their decisions, it would be helpful to have that. Last year, the tuition was thirty-six hundred per year. My recommendation would be holding it constant. We see, we do have some requirements under the kindergarten grant in terms of how much funding we can collect. This figure has worked well for us last year and seems to be reasonable. The feedback I've got from parents is that many parents feel that that's already high. And I think when you look comparatively, I think it's really pretty competitive. So I would suggest going forward with keeping it at the thirty-six hundred per year.
Yeah. We did the full analysis last year, and it was pretty much smack dab in the middle.
Exactly. So I think we, I think, and it, and it funds what we need it to fund. I think it's wise to keep it.
And on a side note along that, can we put under all the, since we're also doing preregistration for the preschool programs, saying this is last year's rate.
That's what we'll do, subject to change.
With a little asterisk, you know, not voted on by school committee, just so parents can't.
What we'll do is put in last year's rate, subject to change.
Right.
Yep. So these are rates from two thousand fourteen, yeah, thirteen, fourteen, subject to change.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the full-day kindergarten remaining at thirty-six hundred dollars?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One other thing I just wanted to let the committee know. We talked last time about collecting a deposit to hold the slot in the full-day program, so that would be due April first. That information is part of the registration process. We had a discussion as to whether or not we should collect that as a non-refundable deposit, which, you know, under the general laws, we have the authority to collect a non-refundable deposit. However, the state issues regulations that are tied to the grant, which last year, I brought you information that the state had regulations regarding tuition for siblings. They also, for grant recipients, will not allow you now to collect a non-refundable. So we will have to go forward with, what we, what we put on the forms was, in order to secure a spot in the full-day program, a deposit of a hundred dollars is due by April first. But we will not be able to hold that as non-refundable as long as we're continuing to receive kindergarten grant monies.
Was the original motion to make them non-refundable, though?
The committee?
Yes.
Yes. So we'll have to.
We'll have to.
Vote on it.
So, so, I was gonna say, we can only just off the Department of Education so much in one night. Is there a motion to change the language of the original deposit to be, you know?
A deposit of a hundred dollars.
A deposit of a hundred dollars as opposed to.
Make an amendment.
A hundred dollars, a hundred dollars non-refundable.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good. All right. Committee reports. Nest, I don't have anything for Nest. Still looking for some more members. We're going to be working, Nest is going to be working, you know, with the TPA and try to get some more joint programming and also, you know, better, better direction so there's, so there's a little less overlap. And, you know, we make sure we're able to do all the things. From a TPA standpoint, though, bingo night is coming up, uh, January twenty, twenty-six. So as I say, if you got your, it should have come home this week in the, in the mail. So make sure, make sure you, that sells out quick, so make sure you do that. And I think that was the twenty-six. Yeah, it doesn't matter. Last Friday of the, for the month. And that's going to be here?
No.
Oh, it's HOD. HOD. So, so that does sell out, though. So make sure you do it ahead of time. And that's a great fundraiser for the TPA every year. KP?
One of the biggest things we had was the discussion of two thousand and fifteen budget. So they had a couple of changes on that. Some that went up regarding some of the stuff, or sped program. So that's something we need to basically keep an eye on.
What sort of number are they talking at their preliminary from a percentage-wise?
I don't remember the specific number, but I believe they were looking at seven to eight percent. Is that accurate?
I think it's higher than that. Now, we just touched base with KP as well because they, we had some questions about the numbers of students they were anticipating coming in on IEPs and out of districts. So the numbers that we had did not match what they were projecting. They were projecting ninety students coming into seventh grade.
And they made a change to it.
And did they? Okay. We only had seventy-seven that we counted.
This is the concern we had, and the change was made that day.
Okay.
Of the meeting.
All right. Because we just, I just got that yesterday, and, because we had set the, the numbers to double-check, and then they had ten out-of-district placements, and we only have eight going forward. So they were making adjustments, and I haven't seen the revised.
We instruct, essentially, from the school committee's standpoint, we instructed the administration to come back and have more definitive numbers. Based on having surprises, we didn't want to see what happened last year happen again. Period.
More definitive numbers every year. More, just give us the real numbers.
So we had essentially three of the board members, myself, as well as Pat, and I can't remember who the last one was, who essentially said to them, come back to us. We want to make sure the next meeting, we have more numbers. We have the numbers that we understand. Because at this point in time, you should have something.
Right.
You should have something for us to go by. And we want to make sure that the finance committee is on the same page with you, because You should have something for us to go by, and we want to make sure that the finance committee's on the same page with you, because for you to make the adjustment the day of meeting, this doesn't fly.
Well, and, and it makes you look like you're just bait and switching, I mean, or, you know, you're pulling games when you're-
We, we kept asking questions.
Oh, we had the wrong number.
Yeah, where's this number coming from?
Oh, someone caught us on this one, I mean, that's basically how, you know, whether it's true or not, that's how-
I, I wouldn't go as far as that, but I, I think that the point, point being made, don't make this adjustment day of, you, you should have known about this number.
Right.
Where did this number come from? You know, drill down on it, and that's essentially what we did that night, we drilled down to every number, and I think that the point was, they understood that whatever they were doing, it needs to stop.
Oh, I know, and what I, what I was saying was, not that they were doing something wrong, it's, but it's, you know, in the past, we've had the, you know, the number is ninety, as their estimate that they've put in as, as a filler, and then, you know, Dr. Alardi raises, and you'll be like, wait a minute, you know, we only have seventy-eight moving up, where are you getting ninety? And they're like, oh, well, let us change that, and, you know, then it just looks like, you know, they're either being cute or lazy, or, you know, whatever, but either way, it's not good. And, and I think that's a public perception problem.
I don't necessarily think it's cute, lazy, or otherwise, I think, but the point well taken, Sean, is essentially was, this is unacceptable. This isn't getting, this is not going to happen, period, and we rifled a number of questions to them and said, come back with numbers that make sense. Period.
Policy, we've got a couple of policies.
We got incidental changes on the student cost, fees, fines, tuitions, and charges, uh, it's pretty much-
Well, it's under, uh-
So you're going to love this one, this is, comes from the regulations for the kindergarten grant, that there's certain language that needs to be in this policy.
Oh, boy.
That just refers to the sliding fee scale, um, and that the policy, the cost is in compliance with state and federal regulations.
So it's just the-
Changes are in blue.
Okay, it's an incidental change, so we don't have to have multiple readings, but, um, so is there a, uh, motion to accept the incidental change in Exhibit Two, File JQ, Student Cost Fees Fines Tuition and Charges?
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Then we got another incidental changes in the bullying prevention. Again, it's-
Changes to the-
Changes in the law that we had to put stuff in, the changes are in blue, well, actually, it's more like a purple. It's just basically-
It was a, a result to changes in the general law, and we were required to add that statement to the definition of bullying, that, um, they've expanded the definition in the law, so that it's not just student to student, but would apply to any staff, um, situations.
Teachers, principals.
And they give you the exact language that's required by law.
Oh, so staff to staff, staff to student, and, and any-
Bus driver, athletic coach, anyway, basically, it covers any, any interactions between people in the school community.
And then we have a first, oh, you got to-
Oh, okay, is there, is there a motion to accept the incidental change, Exhibit Three, File JI-
JICF.
ICBF, Bullying Prevention.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. And then we have a first reading on, um, consider, uh, considerations and criti, uh, criteria for approval, approving school partners.
And the goal of this was to help define a little bit more clearly who's eligible for partnership, um, and that this would be attached to policy KBE as guidelines, to define a little bit more clearly, so that it's easier for people considering applying for partnership, um, what, what is required for a school to be eligible.
Um, shouldn't we add into this the, um, further align the, uh, renewal form, um, in so much as, you know-
We made that adjustment, that, in terms of filling the full application out.
Right, but, um, but, you know, but, I think on the renewal form, it should be worded differently, as in, you know, how is the work to be performed, is, you know, in the proposed directly, in the proposal directly related to the mission of the MPS, um, and I think we should also put in there, um-
To continue them.
Or, or, you know, basically, how, how has your-
Have you met this?
How have you met this?
Okay.
This goal, and, you know, same with, same with the other ones, um, related to the strategic plan, you know, and, you know, or maybe just give a, uh, give examples of-
Examples, have you done this?
You know, give examples of, you know, somewhere of, you know, what you did in the previous year, you know, not, not in the past. I think it should be, you know, specific to the previous year. Alright. Alright, is that it, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, Kelly, budget?
Um, I have no update to provide.
Yeah, we're meeting.
We're meeting after this.
Probably wouldn't be informative or true, so, um, are we meeting after?
We are meeting afterwards.
Okay. So we will be meeting afterwards, the meeting, and hopefully we'll come up with a, um, I think where we left off was a, come up with the assumptions-
Yep.
Based on last year.
Yep, we were gonna, and, talk about the, you know, preliminary budget, with the goal of having a preliminary budget for the committee, hopefully in February.
Okay.
Pending negotiations.
And we have the public budget hearing is March, right?
Yes, it depends, yes, on negotiations, yeah.
Technology?
At our first meeting last month, talked about goals and standards, our next meeting will be this Thursday.
And school building, Thomas?
Um, we had a meeting last week, the loom wars have concluded, uh, it appears. I won't bore everyone with the details of that, but it appears we did avoid arbitration, that was an issue that was, uh, hanging over everyone's head, so we managed to come to some solution, it appears, pending final approval or acceptance, I guess, of the, but it sounded like that was the case, um-
Is that an okay solution?
Yeah, I mean, there was at least one person who, I don't think anyone likes it, um, but it is probably the best possible solution, given it was out there. The, the arbitration route had some pitfalls that I personally didn't think is a good route to go. So they, it's a decent amount of money, it gets rid of the issue, it's probably as good a result as we were going to get, most likely. Could we have gotten a better result in arbitration? Maybe, but we also could have gotten a far worse result.
Right.
And it could have been a lot more costly, so.
Spend twenty thousand to save ten.
It probably may have been worse, so that's, it's, it's the best possible result, it's not ideal, but I think it's, it's, it's fine, given where we are in the project and everything like that. So, um, the anticipation at this point is, there is one final meeting, um, which hopefully everything will get rectified. Budget-wise, everything still continues to appear, um, to be on track, we'll still have a little bit of money left over. You're no longer losing hearing from your office, so we fix that issue, so that's good.
Okay.
And then as far as everything else with the building itself, I mean, I think there's some wrap-up items and punch list items and that type of thing to do, but largely completed, um, do I think there's anything else?
The only other thing that, um, came up that I would suggest is that, um, there, there is an anticipation that, um, as we close out the project, there'll be some money left in the, um, in the project, in the building budget. The, uh, building committee's intent is to turn that money back over to the town, into the selectmen. What I asked was, there are a few projects and things that we cut, that we did not fund because we weren't sure the budget picture, and I wanted to present the recommendations and the costs before we determine, um, before we close out. And so I was asked to put together a list of the, of projects that we wanted to see completed, the potential costs, and then there'll be some discussion about, at the next meeting, whether they turn the money over with the list to the selectmen, or whether we fund some of those things. Biggest one is, um, screens and shades in the cafeteria, which will be probably, I mean, I would imagine fifteen thousand dollars, something like that. So some of these are going to be bigger than the school budget can necessarily absorb. So we want to take a look at any of those to make sure that we fund what we can out of the building project before we close out.
No, I was gonna say, would that match out the, you know, the state matching, or?
This would be, no, they, they won't.
They would match this.
This would be a change order, so it would be completely funded by the remaining funds.
It would be self-funded by it.
But my concern is if we don't finish some of these projects that are going to be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, and the money gets closed out, they'll never get done. You know, they're capital items, I don't see going back to the town for capital funding for the Freeman Kennedy when they just funded this. But if we don't put shades up in the cafeteria, then the auditorium where you've got that screen, um, you can't see it. It's useless for presentations, it's too bright in there, so there's a few things like that, they're not major, that's one. I'm going to set up a time to meet with Lisa, with Bob, and kind of put together that list and put together potential costs, I want Todd Hassett to look at it as well, um, and then it'll come to the building committee next time to discuss.
And that would still have to go out to bed anyways, because it's too big, but we, we wouldn't have to-
Unless it came off of the state contract, but, yeah.
Right, but I mean, but it wouldn't have to go through the GC or anything along those lines, right? And can we get these screens, these ones, I mean, I know we've been talking about it for a year.
There's two problematic ones here, yes.
Do you which ones?
So we're going to try to do that, I just want to make sure we don't close out prematurely without, at least considering what things were put on the table.
Right.
That was the thing, I was trying to figure out how to actually start the closing process, which is incredibly involved, from what we, what was explained to us. But going back to screens in the cafeteria, there's also for lockdown, you want, as well, so there's a safety component to that as well.
There's a safety piece to it as well, yes.
And then the only other issue that's still being worked on is the noise abatement from the, you know, rooftop units, that was a crash and burn essentially for the first place that we tried, so we're going to have to restart that process again, so that, but that money is already budgeted, so it's already set aside, so as long as that cost doesn't change ridiculously, we're, we're fine with that, and then, again, that's still-
Oh, that was because of the, uh, well, we gave you a price, but we were just making it up, we didn't actually know it was a-
The subcontractor refused to deliver draft drawings without prepayment, and then that, that relationship between Walsh and the subcontractor fell apart, and they refused it to work, so he won't do the work anymore, basically. So they need to find another company.
Play nice in the sandbox.
Considering they've paid, you know, a ridiculous sum of money to basically stick, you know, some metal, you know, sheet, uh, metal-coated styrofoam around it, it's, uh, you know, for fifty thousand dollars, you're just like, really? You're going to complain about this?
The assumption seemed to be that he wasn't used to dealing with, uh, public entities or government entity, I think he's just used to dealing, but I don't even know what private business would just say, oh yeah, sure, just put that up there, I'll pay you fifty thou, I mean, who pays front for it?
It was, and it was big money too, I mean, it's not like it was-
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand dollars for-
Two thousand a unit, I think.
With zero guarantees.
Yeah.
That, well, we'll shove it up there and hope, let's hope it works, I mean, it's-
And the problem was that they, they were trying to get Walsh, who, who put them in there to do the subcontracting and work with this other group, because if we just bring somebody else in, then the workmanship warranty that own Walsh's is void. So that's what their issue is, they've got to find another sub that will work through Walsh to do this work.
Alright, and, uh, last, on new business, we have CPAC, uh, applying for a renewal for a school partner. Exhibit Five, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And last but not least, uh, minutes, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And decision item, next school committee meeting we have for Tuesday, February eleventh, does that still work for everybody?
It still works for me.
I may be missing, I won't let you, I won't be able to let you know until a couple of days before.
You're just trying to incentivize us, I think, Jeff.
So definitely the eleventh.
Definitely the eleventh.
Eleven couldn't be a better day.
Yeah, that works.
You good, Kelly? Everyone else good, okay? Well, the following week is school vacation, so it's basically-
Oh, no.
And I can't do the twelfth. Alright, so we're okay, you okay with that, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I probably can't do the eleventh, I have to do a presentation down in Hingham, so.
Okay. We'll, we'll Skype you in. How's that? Your technology.
Make your day, right?
Alright. Is, there's no executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.